Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 24th. It is 5:30. We have a full dais. I am calling the executive session to order. We have two items we will be discussing this evening. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interest associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. And item 2B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 for a general briefing by the city attorney regarding pending legal matters, including litigation and administrative law proceedings such as, but not limited to, CAS 423-7941, Bastrop County, CAS 423-1842, Bastrop County, Number 52-22, I'm sorry, -21, Bastrop County, Number 120 CV 00317, LYAWA U.S. District Court, 121 CV 00121, RP U.S. District Court, and EEOC Number 451 2020-02990. It is 5:31, and we are in executive session. We will have our regular meeting starting 6:30. We are in executive session. 6:30, and we are out of executive session and back into regular session. We are on item number three, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. There will be no action as a result of executive session. So I, we're gonna, it's 6:30. We're gonna take a two-minute recess and let folks come in and get a place to sit down. So we're in recess for just a quick moment. Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 24th. It is 6:31. We have a full dais, and I am calling this city council meeting to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand, we'll say our pledges to both flags.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas fire, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one straight, under God, one and indivisible.
If you would please remain standing. We are honored to have Chaplain Burke with us. If you would please give the invocation for us this evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just, as we gather tonight with the city council here, we thank you for the mayor and the city manager and each council member. Lord, we've been blessed with each one here that has the experience and the knowledge for the positions that they're in, and the integrity. Lord, we thank you tonight as, as we pray over our, our community here, as we, school is now started, and, Lord, we thank you for safety of our, of our students in our schools, be it with BISD and the home schools and the charter school. But, Lord, we thank you that, against, we come against this COVID virus that's still trying to attack our community. And according to Psalm 91, it say, "No evil shall befall us, nor any plague come near our dwelling," as we seek you out, Lord. So, Lord, I thank you there's a covering over the city. And, Lord, I thank you as we're expanding for more people coming to our community, as there's more commerce here and more activity going. Lord, we thank you that we are a blessed community. So as each councilman, as they consider each decision tonight, Lord, we pray for their wisdom in all that they do, and we thank you for it. In Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Burke. We appreciate the invocation and the service that you provide our police officers. Gives back to the community in many, many ways. All right, council, moving on to our reporting time. On my mayor's report, I have a couple of things I wanted to go over before we get into it. Council, you may recall that we recently are ribbon-cutting at the Wield Sports Plaza. And at our last council meeting, I asked about a water fountain and trash can and benches. And I know that we all received a report, but I wanted the public to know that those things are in the works, and they are expected to be completed by the end of September. So I know those skaters and rollerbladers and scooter riders and skateboard riders will appreciate that. All right, Colin, if we can go on to the next page. It's, it's been a busy couple of weeks. And start in the upper left-hand corner, I was, really had a great time at the Bastrop Opera House. They did their season reveal. They did something new this year, and had one of their board members stand up, and they did charades, and bigger, smaller, and what other thing did they do? Pictionary to, and to give clues so that the audience member could guess what the name of the play was. And that's how they revealed all their plays for the season. It was really great. So Councilmember Jackson, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, and Councilmember Rogers and I were all at that event. And I believe Councilmember Rogers was the first voluntold from the audience and guessed the first play. So we had a great time, and it was neat to get a picture with Lisa at that event. If you go down just a little bit, that, this is my traditional, some of you know, some of you don't, I was the nerdy band person in high school, and I was drum major. And the, when the band directors found that out, every year at homecoming parade, I get my picture taken with the drum majors. It's just kind of a, we have a secret handshake that I can't share with everyone else. And one of the drum majors is a senior, and she is headed and gonna major in trumpet. So there's some really great musicians. And then right next to the drum majors of Bastrop High School Band, you see some of the cheerleaders with our Public Works folks. I think this is the biggest smile they had all day. They were happy to, to visit with the cheerleaders, and we had a great time at Bastrop Homecoming. Then if you go just below that, you'll see that I participated in congratulating Riverwood Medical Clinic. Dr. Gupta has been in the community for 25 years. So we were all glad to, and certainly appreciate all that he's given to the community. And Colin, if you'll go kinda up and to the right, I went from the ribbon cutting, and a couple hours later, I was hosting the Farm Street Opry. And there I am with the band. And Mayor Pro Tem Nelson's going to be the host for September. And Councilmember Jackson, I believe you're gonna do November. So it is always the, or December, it's always the first Thursday of the month. It is some great old country music, and everyone always has a really good time. Then if you go on the upper right-hand corner, that's a picture of me with Wayne Douglas Morgan and Quentin Aaron. Some of you may recognize Quentin Aaron played Michael Orr in The Blind Side. And Wayne Douglas Morgan has been in a million movies, and it, he, he's got that look. He's either the, the drug guy and the bad guy, mob guy, or he's the FBI investigator. It's one extreme or the other is what he plays in the movies. But they came by Bastrop, and we had helped them promote a birthday event that Quentin was having, and just a, two really lovely gentlemen, and it was nice to get a picture of them here in Bastrop. Then, August 12th was kind of a busy day. It was important for some of the people at home to know, I did not wear that dress three times in the last two weeks. I did all of those things in the same day. I, at noon that day, Texas Municipal League was, here in Bastrop, we hosted the Newly-Elected Officials' Conference. And so I welcomed them to Bastrop and encouraged them to participate in some of our restaurants and businesses. So that's a picture of me with one of the TML staff. Cheryl is just a dear friend, and it was, it was great to spend some time with them. And then the picture to the left, Mayor Chris Cannon and I have served together since 2017, and he is no longer mayor, and they were having, finally, from May, having a goodbye event for him. And I enjoyed serving with him, so I ran over to Elgin to give him a hug. And then I came back because the chamber was having their Alive After Five, which was hosted by Paul Nobles, who is the, it, for the user interface web guy, just a, a great, great guy, and has given a lot to the community. So that's some of the things I did between August 5th and August 16th. And then the next slide, Mr. Peterson, this is for everybody but mostly for you. Many of us know that Camp Swift was built in 1942. Colin, if you'll go to upper left, there it is, 1942. Some of us even recognize the, the cars in 1942, and that's one of the first barracks. If you go down, Colin, on the bottom-left corner, that is a picture that I took when I visited Camp Swift on December 17th of 2020, and that is 3D printing the barracks. And a very cool project that is a private-public partnership, really a neat deal. And then if you move to the upper-right-hand corner, we had the ribbon cutting. Senator Cornyn came and joined us for the ribbon cutting, and you can see the ribbon cutting going on. And if you really zoomed in, and I don't know if, Colin, if the picture's even well enough to see it, you'll be able to see the ridges of the 3D printing that's been done on the sides. And then if you go below that, there's a picture of the inside, pretty cool barracks. So what a difference 79 years make. But I, I thought that was a neat thing going on in Bastrop County, and I wanted to share that with you guys. Colin, if you go to the next page, you'll see some planned events. And I did go to the Rotary Scholarship Presentation today, and met a gentleman from the Texas State Technical College. And there's some just awesome opportunities. Superintendent Edwards and I were, were drooling in our conversation with the Vice President of Development. So I'll tell you more about that at our next council meeting. Colin, if you'll go to the next page. Council, you know that tomorrow night, we will not be needing the second day of the applicant interview, so we won't be doing that. On Friday, I'll be participating in the Sales Tax Webinar put on by the Texas Economic Development Commission as a part of, since I'm a part of the BEDC Board. And then I left out on my report that I turned in, but I want to make sure everyone knows that Bastrop is hosting Boogie Back to Texas on August 27th and 28th. Council, I would draw your attention to next Monday, we will have our joint meeting with Visit Bastrop. That is on your council shared calendar. And the chamber lunch, don't let it sneak up on you. It's the first Wednesday of the month, and that happens to be September 1st. So don't, don't wake up on September 2nd and realize that you've missed it. And then, since that's the first Wednesday of the month, the very next day will be the first Thursday of the month, and Mayor Pro Tem Nelson will be, as I said, hosting Farm Street Opry. And also, on September 3rd and 4th, the Thin Blue Line Foundation is having a bike rally that is Back the Blue, so that'll be going on in Bastrop. And on September 4th, there is the event that will be remembering the Bastrop County Complex Fires. It will be 10 years on, on that Saturday. And you see a few, Labor Day's coming up, and you'll see a few other meetings. And then we will be back in chambers on September 14th. So I started on this side last time, so I'm gonna start on this side. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything to share?
No, not, not this night, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
No, ma'am, not this night.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Just a couple of things, Madam Mayor. Colin, you put that slide that I, there you are. I was real honored last week to be asked to participate in a mentoring program with mid-level managers at TechDOT. And they actually called the Mid-Management Leadership Seminar from a local elected official's perspective. It was a great lesson for me, and hopefully for them. This, this chart, I was amazed at this chart. It shows for roadways in the state of Texas, the myriad of agencies that are involved, and the myriad of, of programs, whether they be through agreements, whether it be through actual work, whether they be through memorandums of understanding. It's a very complicated process, and it's a completely different process for dealing with highway and bridges opposed to rail, as opposed to transit. So it was a, it was a tremendous learning experience. One of the things I did learn is that of the public roads in the state of Texas, only 1% of them are owned by the federal government, 26% of them are owned by TechDOT, 47 are owned by the counties, the 254 counties across the state, and 26% of them are owned by town, cities, and municipalities. I thought feds own everything, but I was wrong on that. But it was a great learning experience for, for them and for me. Their emphasis was on optimizing their education, enhancing communication with the local communities. And, and we spoke of the, the policy difference between dealing with the cities and dealing with the counties, and the, and the varying degrees of, of cooperation that come about on that. So I was real appreciative that CAP-COG asked me to participate in that. And then I have one other, and I hope I'm not stealing some of the city, some of the thunder from the city manager. Colin, can you switch to the next one, please? I would, but my finger, there you go. I want to alert everybody that, that Warren Central Texas is a great website that everybody can go to and get into their notification system, that when an emergency occurs, or when some odd event occurs, you can be notified and prepare yourself and your family. Thanks to Chief Rosales and to Sheila Lowe with the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. There is a really good point in our, I'm tech-tarded, I'm sorry, in our, on our city website about being prepared. And it's an excellent, excellent site on the city's website. I have the name for it, just a moment.
And we'll be talking about it during the National Preparedness Proclamation.
I, I know. That's why I was saying about seeing, seeing the thunder. But, but it, I think it's vitally important that, that our citizens be prepared as much as they possibly can.
Absolutely.
So it's, I, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Crouch?
Um, we, we did get to interview some great applicants for the board positions this week, so that was, that was exciting to get to do that. And then we've had several budget workshops. I've reached out to the, to TechDOT to get some more information about the signage that the city can put up for downtown businesses along the side of the road. So I have a ton of new information, some good, some bad, because our, to get the signs that I thought would really work great for downtown businesses, you'd have to be under 5,000 population. So still some signage opportunities, like the little directional signs that tell you to go to get the gas and stuff, but not, not all of the ones that I was thinking of. Our, our biking advocacy list is, is growing, and so we'll have a pretty good list, hopefully within the next 30 days, to, to share, to see if maybe we can incorporate some of that with our parks and rec division. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Jackson?
I also attended that TML, the new, even though I'm not newly elected, I went to the newly elected officials meeting and learned a lot. In fact, I have some handouts to share with the mayor and council of some things that were, I thought were vitally important. And it was kind of a refresher for me. It was a lot of things on parliamentary procedure and things like that. And it's really some good handouts, and I'll get that to them shortly. Also, the Opera House reveal, which was really exciting. I'm looking forward to their season of the new shows that they're gonna be doing at the Opera House. The Texas Observer Magazine is doing a survey, and they were in town this last weekend, and they're coming back this week. They're wanting to see what topics of interest the community of Bastrop might have, so they could cover it. They said, since we just have the one newspaper here, they thought that maybe some issues in the magazine might be important. So they'll be doing a survey at the Kerr Community Center this weekend. And if anyone's interested, I can get you some more information on that. Also, I serve on the State Bar of Texas Grievance Committee, and we had our investigatory hearings this past week, which was exciting. Mr. Borcas, it was very interesting to see different things about law, and I'm learning a lot about that. But it was a long session, but it was good. Other than that, that's, as Councilmember Crouch said, we did interview some great people for some of the boards and commissions, and looking forward to some of those people being appointed and working with them. But that's all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We're moving on to item 7C. Mr. Hoffman?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of things to report tonight. One, I'll briefly mention, and I don't have a slide on this. Council, over the weekend, I was educating with you about a, a potential march that could have been disruptive in the community that we found out was planned for, to take place in Bastrop. I just want to publicly commend the, the Bastrop Police Department and other jurisdictions in the area that participated in our effort to make sure nothing came of that. I think Chief Nagy handled this expertly and showed just the right level of city presence to make sure that was managed well. So public kudos to him. Colin, if you don't mind, I mentioned in Friday's weekly memo that the city has upgraded its scenic city status. Council, this is a program, this is a nationwide program that allows cities to get, be recognized for how they approach regulation in their cities towards promoting a scenic city. And there's a lot of focus on how we manage that, that public realm, especially where it matches up against the, the private realm. Since the time the city received a bronze status about five years ago, thanks to Jennifer Bills for being diligent on this and paying attention, you know, the city council completely rewrote the city's development codes, and a whole lot about that involves the city being scenic, and, again, managing that, that public way, and where it intersects the private property. And so as a result of that, we, we received an upgrade to gold status, which is, I think, a pretty big deal. And we will be recognized at the TML conference here in, in a few weeks. So thank you, Jennifer, for that. Thank you, council, for going through that process. This is a good outcome from all of that. Thank you to Chief Stefanik and Nagy for continuing their periodic coffee with the chiefs. That's an opportunity for them to informally meet with citizens of Bastrop and, in a relaxed, informal atmosphere, and get to know folks, have people get to know them, and ask them questions. This last Thursday, they conducted their most recent coffee with the chief session in the Pecan Park neighborhood, which is a newer development in town. So they got to meet 20 or 25 new residents of Bastrop. That, that is a priority of ours to make sure we're communicating well with our newer residents as well. And they, they fielded a lot of questions about traffic and, and crime. There have been a few attempts at car break-ins in that neighborhood over the few weeks. I think we've mentioned that before. And they were able to provide a lot of good practical information and advice to people on how to stay safe and to protect their property. Thank you, Colin. And so, as the mayor mentioned, on August the 30th, that is next Monday, is our annual joint meeting with Visit Bastrop, where they'll talk about their plan for the next fiscal year. That meeting starts at 5 o'clock. And then, on September 14th, that's your next regular meeting, we'll ask you to consider adopting the budget and the tax rate on, on first reading. Also scheduled for that evening is council consideration of a Foundry Art Immersion Project. This project idea was an initiative of our friends at the Deep in the Heart Foundry. And this, this idea for displaying their, their work on public rights of way in Bastrop, especially in the downtown area, has been presented to the Cultural Arts Commission and the Main Street Advisory Board. And we think it will be ready for council to look at on September 14th. And as, as we understand it, the staff at the Economic Development Corporation is drafting a, a funding agreement to speak to that $50,000 contribution from EDC funds to the Main Street program. And that is to be presented to the city council on the 14th as well. And then on September 21st, which is that next Tuesday, and we spoke about that, we'll ask council to consider the budget and tax rate on second reading, and consider the changes to water and wastewater rates. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Council, any questions for the city manager? Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
No questions, but the scenic city gold status, I think we ought to recognize Ms. Wilson, her work in, in helping us to achieve that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We are moving on to our first proclamation that Mayor Pro Tem Nelson so nicely set up for us. It is as follows. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the month of September as National Preparedness Month. Just today, we're, we have tropical storms. I told Andreas, he has to listen to the calls till they have names. They have to get a little bit closer before I, I start paying a whole lot of attention to them. But thankfully, that's, as both Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and the city manager have talked about, we are very, very blessed to have our police chief and our fire chief that are always looking out for our public safety. So I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas September is the National Preparedness Month, which serves as a reminder that we must all take action to prepare now and throughout the year for the types of emergencies that could affect us where we live, work, and also where we visit. Whereas the National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for the residents and businesses in the city of Bastrop to prepare their homes, establishments, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters, potential terror attacks. And if you live in Bastrop County, you know that there are months and years that we think locusts are coming next. We have had fires and then had floods during droughts and burn bands, and we have persevered through it all. So it truly can be next to almost anything. Whereas this year is even more imperative for the city of Bastrop to recognize the need for preparedness in the midst of this pandemic. Keeping our residents informed about public health issues is paramount. The city of Bastrop, along with other regional, state, and national partners, support the WarrenCentralTexas.org campaign to increase public readiness in preparing for emergencies and educating citizens on how to take action. Whereas preparedness is an ongoing effort of all citizens in the CAP-COG region, including youth, older adults, and people with access and functional needs. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, our businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation throughout our nation. Whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen in the city, and all citizens are encouraged to make preparedness a prior priority. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Preparedness Month. And Chief Rosales is going to come accept this proclamation. Let's give him a round of applause.
Chief Rosales, you've got some friends on you. Did you see them?
Yes, they, they chose to show up. They thought they were gonna be funny, and see what happens. Join us. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, September is definitely National Preparedness Month. It's important. We went over the roles during our presentation to the, the chamber. It's important. Mayor Pro Tem said the website is, is, it's cityofbastroppreparateness. It just goes there, and you can get all kinds of information, handouts. And next month, we will be doing lots of flyers, visiting different businesses, and helping out. So any questions, just call emergency management. Yeah, sure. Down on the end is firefighter Wayne Arnold. I almost called him his brother, but Wayne Arnold. And then Ethan And then Ethan Perry is in the middle there, firefighter, and firefighter Chris Stone. Ethan and Chris are part of our full-timers, and Wayne is one of our volunteers. Thank you, guys, for showing.
And one of our partners in preparedness is the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. So, I know we've got representatives, if they'll come forward to be here along with Chief Rosales and anybody else that you think ought to be up here now. September 4th is a day that, if you live in Bastrop County, you'll never, ever forget. And September 4th of 2011, it is hard to believe it has been 10 years ago. Whereas during 2011, Texas endured the most severe single-year drought since 1956, and whereas on September 4th, 2011, spurred on by the dry conditions and high winds, three separate fires merged into one catastrophic blaze. And whereas the wildfire heavily damaged the much-loved Lost Pines Forest, a population of loblawli pines from the Pleistocene era, a long, long time ago. Whereas the wildfire destroyed the majority of the habitat of the endangered Houston toad, and whereas with two deaths, 32,000 acres burned and the loss of 1,690 residential structures with a damage estimate of $325 million resulting from the wildfire. Whereas the Bastrop County Complex Fire was the most destructive wildfire in the history of the state of Texas. Now, therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as the 10th year anniversary of the Bastrop County Complex Fire and Perseverance in the Pines Month. So, and you have to tell me your name, because I don't know.
Hi, Leah.
Leah. Sheila Lowe wasn't able to be with us this evening, so we're thrilled that Leah is. On September 4th, there will be a ceremony over at the convention center that starts at noon.
Yes.
Starts at noon. Everybody is invited. Phoenix rise from ashes. If you drive down 71, you'll see that Mother Nature knows how to fight back. That's all great, but there are also some deep wounds, and there's some folks who have really taken the extra step to move forward. We are so thankful for the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team and for the programs that they do every month, not just September, to keep us all prepared and safe. So, let's give Leah a round of applause.
I was going to say.
You have to say it in the mic.
Sheila said, "Do you know what you're going to say?" And I go, "No, ma'am." And she said, "You just say, 'On behalf of the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team, thank you so much,' and then say, 'I love you, I love you, I love you.'" We love the community, and we are so grateful for everyone who helps us, and we could not do it without everybody, and thank you so much.
Moving on, we do not have, let's see, we don't have any staff reports, but we do have a work session and a briefing. Item 8A, receive presentation from BGE Inc. on a future request for the creation of Creekside Municipal Utility District MUDs 3 and 4 within the City of Bastrop Voluntary Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. If you are following along at home, we're on page 21 of the packet. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So, as you stated, this is just a presentation tonight by the developers that wish to make a petition for the, create two new MUDs, municipal utility districts that are out near 812 and 21. So, that area seems to most people a little far out. It is within our ETJ. Anything within the city's ETJ, be it our voluntary or statutory, that mud consent agreements or requests come to the city first. And so, we have review authority over the creation of those MUDs, and so, they're going to present kind of their concept tonight, so that when we come back with the actual agreement or consent agreement and their request, this won't be the first time you've seen it, and you'll have an idea of kind of what they're talking about, so.
And Mayor, if I might just quickly add to what Jennifer just said, there's been, as there's no petitions submitted at this time, there's been no staff review of this, so just keep that in mind. There will be plenty of opportunity in the future as this moves on for plenty of staff analysis and review. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Mr. Manager, and council members, thank you very much for having us and letting us tell you a little bit about ourselves tonight. Let's see if I can advance the technology here. So, my name's Craig Benson, and I'm from the CTX Management Holdings, and we're the developers of this project here in Creekside, and we have three of our four partners here tonight besides myself. I've got Alan Cowden and Josh Thornton, and also, since you saw the BGE name, we've got Brian Grace, and he and his colleague Seth Mirig are our engineers that are working on this project for us. And then, we have Tim Miller here, who, he and his partner Ryan Harper are our attorneys and counsel for the mud creation and all of the wastewater entitlements that we're doing there. So, I think you'll hear at different times tonight from each of them for their particular parts of this. So, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about us. We're all Central Texas guys. In fact, I'm a Bastrop County property owner, taxpayer, so I have a stake in this as well. And as a group, like I said, we're all local. We live in or around the Central Texas area. Heck, Josh's family's been cattle farmers in Lano County since the 1850s, so we've all been here a long time. Our investors and partners are all local guys, too. In fact, I enjoyed seeing the Camp Swift deal, because one of the Icon 3D Printing founders is one of our investors, too. So, we're pretty familiar with that project. So, our experience between the four of us, we've got about 85 years of development and business experience here for the real estate market, and virtually all classes of real estate, from ranches to single-family, multifamily, commercial, medical, you know, you name it, we've done it all. Maybe one of the, including public-private partnerships, like you mentioned also earlier, Mayor. If you're familiar with the Seehome Power Plant Project in downtown Austin, Alan was a senior partner, developer of that, and you can probably appreciate that over that 12 years, that was an exciting thing to do with the city of Austin. So, it was quite a project, a great success, and now quite a landmark there in downtown Austin. So, we're very much long-term investors and holders. We are not one of these funds that flip out in three to five years. We're in this for a very long period, and we're super excited about this project. And as a team, CTX and our brand, we call it Lifeside, and this will be our Creekside community. We also have projects in the New Braunfels, San Marcos area, and Yuland, and in Garfield, just across the Travis County line here. So, a lot of background and expertise in these type of multi-dimensional, multifaceted projects, and we're super excited to be here in Bastrop County. And so, just to show you where it, oops, let's see, just to show you, I don't have to explain a lot about this, where it is. Jennifer mentioned, we're at the, kind of at the intersection of 812 and 21. As it turns out, we wrap around essentially the 100 acres that Bastrop ISD. This, I apologize, you need a big pair of glasses to really see this, but this is actually the breakdown of MUD 1 and 2. But as we wrap around that little space there, that is the 100 acres of Bastrop ISD, where they're looking to launch that new elementary school there. So, we really appreciate the chance to work both with all the, you know, local officials. We've, I think, had at least a preliminary meeting with some of the city staff just to introduce this project. We've also met with the Bastrop County Commissioners multiple times as far as, you know, their area of interest for this project. And also, we've been working with the school, because our submission with TCEQ includes providing wastewater for the school district there, for that property. And also, I was glad to see, well, our fire department colleagues are gone, but we've also had discussions with ESD 1, and they're very interested in locating a station out here on this property as well to service this particular area. So, we, I don't know, had two or three meetings with their team to advance those, and I can tell you, they drive a hard bargain, so we're going to make sure they get a super deal on the station out there to make that happen. So, I think with that, I would like to turn it over to Brian from the engineering side to talk about this project and get to the specific ask. So, very nice to see you guys, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Crouch, if you'll turn on your mic, we'll be able to hear you.
Did you say one of the, that red square was BISD on that other map you had up?
Uh, hang on just a second.
I was just curious what school districts those two are in.
Yeah, the, let me, if I can, back up one more slide. So, if you look at that.
The red is MUD number four, the yellow is MUD number three, and the area at the intersection is the school property.
Right. Back up one more.
Forward.
Yep.
There you go. Colin, if you could zoom in on the yellow and red squares?
Yeah, that's easier. So, yeah, the little spot right at the 812-21 intersection on the sort of northeast side, that's the 100 acres for BISD.
That little piece?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was just curious when I saw this earlier. Thank you for that.
Yep, you bet. So, the total project is about 1,220 acres.
Colin, can you unzoom them?
Sorry. Okay, now we're going. Great. Got it, Brian?
Yep. All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members. My name is Brian Grace. I'm with BGE. As mentioned, we're the civil engineer for the project. A real quick overview of this project, it's a good kind of mixed-use community, a lot of, variety of product types of residential. We've got about 560 acres of single-family development, over 250 acres of parks and open space. There will be some multifamily and commercial development along the FMH 12 and, you know, state highway frontage. Also, as mentioned, carving out space for the local emergency services district in addition to, you know, providing space for wastewater treatment facilities. So, jurisdiction, as mentioned, we are in the City of Bastrop area of the ETJ. We will be utilizing Bastrop County for review and approval authority of subdivision regulations. Water supply is going to be provided by Aqua. We are currently in the middle of negotiating the, you know, studies with them. There is no wastewater facilities in this area, so we will be needing to build a variety of smaller package facilities and also the full-blown wastewater treatment plants. It will all be done with, you know, discharge permits, all to TCEQ standards. We will be getting licensed operators to, you know, manage these facilities all in accordance with the Colorado River Treatment Standards. Roadway infrastructure, we are surrounded by state highways. Primary connection points are to FMH 12 and SH 21. We've got our traffic impact analysis that are currently being reviewed and coordinated with TechSop, you know, the local area office. We've also got a variety of collectors and arterials that are going throughout the development in accordance with the Bastrop County Transportation Plan. Stormwater, I know that's a big thing, of course, and we will be doing formal drainage studies and providing, you know, detention for our runoff, all in accordance with, you know, up-to-date Atlas 14 rainfall standards. And with that, I will pass it off.
Good job.
I did have one thing I forgot to add on the map, just to give you more of a reference.
I need you to come to the mic, because we're streaming it, and they can't hear you at home.
I did forget to mention on the map that actually, from this facility, this property's 18 miles from here, and it's actually nine miles from the city limits. So, it's, as you said earlier, it's out there a little ways. So, anyway, thanks for that.
All right. I would also just like to say thank you to council for hearing us today. As the mayor noted earlier, we have not submitted, or sorry, as city manager noted earlier, we have not submitted the formal petitions for consent to creation yet. We're here today just to get feedback from council and present to you. After today, we will submit the formal petitions for consent to creation, not immediately, but soon hereafter. And we'll be asking for consent to creation of both MUD 3 and MUD 4. As was noted, it's approximately 1,200 acres. And then, in connection with the consent as well, the developer will be offering, entering into a strategic partnership agreement with the city, which will provide for limited purpose annexation, so the city can impose its sales tax on the commercial property within the development. And then, quickly, too, as noted on the right there, for tax rate purposes, by law, this property will be limited to a maximum tax rate of $1. The next couple slides just really show kind of the boundary districts, both up a little closer, as well as, it's kind of small here, but hopefully you all have the presentation, the uses in the district by color and percentages there.
We're on page 29 of the packet, if you're following from home.
Yes. That's a map showing both of the districts. The next couple slides will show each district a little bit closer up. And as Brian noted, it's mixed use, the variety of single-family, multifamily, commercial, mixed use as well. And then, the second district will, as shown there, be predominantly single-family. The slides to end the presentation are just examples of what the developer plans to put on the property in terms of homes, amenities, mixed use, commercial uses. Here's an example of some of the single-family residents that, residences that could be placed on the property. Moving on to examples of multifamily communities that could be built on the property. Mixed use, commercial uses. Interiors of the residences. And then, community amenities, as was noted earlier, there's a fairly significant amount of open and green space, parkland, and trails that will be offered within the community. One of the amenities being a pool and a clubhouse to go with it. And then, just the closing slides introducing the various consultants, me being a representative of ABHR, BG being the engineer, Baird being the financial advisor, and then CTX Management Holdings being the developers of the property. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure staff is forward to the submittal, and then council will have an opportunity to visit with staff when they've had a chance to review it. I appreciate you guys coming out tonight. It's great to put faces with names, and we're glad that you're able to meet and see our team as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's, y'all are welcome to stay. It's a Tuesday night, you're also welcome to go, so you're not going to hurt any feelings. Do whatever you wish. All right, we are moving on to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item number 11, Approval of Minutes, 11A. Consider action to approve city council minutes from the August 10th regular session meeting. Happy to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously, and the meeting minutes are approved. We're moving on to items for individual consideration. Item number 12A, consider action to approve the first reading of Resolution Number R 2021-66 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a project with Moka Ventures Nebraska LLC, formerly known as John Bosch Augers and Flying Inc. and Project Swipe, in the amount of $900,000 for the project, providing for an effective date and move to include on the September 14th, 2021 consent agenda for the second reading. Ms. Rehman-Schneider.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us. Yes, Moka Ventures did approach- Yes, Mocha Ventures did approach us a few months ago and we're very excited to present this project to you this evening. Basically, kind of the long and short of the project itself, it's a financial technology company. They work with apps and technology to make transactions with credit cards easier and more functional, and even more importantly, if you lose your credit card or it gets, you know, stolen or malfunctions in some way, you can literally order a new card directly from the app and you get it right then. It generates onto your phone. It's kind of crazy technology, but fun. They are looking at doing a phased project on the 26 acres, ultimately providing 70,000 square feet and anywhere from 400 to 700 employees, depending on how they grow. The types of jobs that they will be providing on the front end for the first couple of phases will be people like software engineers and technology, computer science people, people that can generate the codes and format the technology for them. And then as they continue to grow, they will ultimately have a call center as well. So they'll have lots of levels of job opportunities. And the $900,000 that the project is proposing this evening is actually to purchase the property. And then once they hit their goals and their process of putting physical buildings on the ground and opening the doors, they will get that money back in return. And so they will develop the property and then we will reimburse them as they create the opportunity.
Ms. Rehman-Schneider, you want to speak to the clawbacks that we have specific in there?
Yes. Let me see if I've got that here. I apologize. So if they do not commence construction on the project within an agreed-upon one year, the property does revert back to the B E D C and the B E D C returns the purchase price less the closing cost plus attorney fees in the amount of $3,500. Sorry. Also, if the developer commences but does not complete the project within an agreed-upon timeframe, the developer keeps the property, but the B E D C does not pay the incentive.
So council, the point is, because it's a wonderful company, and Ms. Rehman-Schneider did a great job of kind of summarizing what Mocha does and what they're about, but from a deal perspective, they are purchasing the property, so there's money coming in and they get that money back when they build the building. If they, you know, because it's always the, well, what if they don't do anything with it? We've had problems before when we had deals that didn't have these type of clawbacks. So if they don't do anything, then we get to keep the money and we get the project. There's steps along the way and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but the big deliverable is a certificate of occupancy that's issued so that we are assured that they are following the permit process and that as we provide great jobs for our community, they're going to a safe building.
That is exactly correct. And then I also want to add one additional kind of clawback opportunity that I think is important to understand, kind of going to the mayor's point, is also included in the language is the authorizing assignment of the agreement to a bank or third party with board approval. So in other words, if they poof go away in the middle of the night and walk away, we still have an opportunity to control the continuation of the build-out and the opportunity for that property. So thanks to our attorneys and our board, we did, I think, a really good job of making sure that the community itself and the B E D C is protected in proceeding with this wonderful company.
Thank you, Ms. Rehman-Schneider. I think you did a great job of summarizing the project. Council, it's also important for you to know that B E D C boarded, board voted unanimously to approve the project. Do you have any questions for Ms. Rehman-Schneider, Councilmember Crouch?
Yeah, I'm glad that there was an opt-out for both, because I know, I read that in there too, exactly what Connie you said, Mayor Schrader said. And then I was just curious, the escrow amount was just minimal. Is there any reason why we didn't ask for more escrow?
We haven't typically in the past, because the way these are structured, it's really about the purchase of the property and bringing the deal kind of quickly to a close so they can move forward and start developing.
Yeah, just for quicker, just for quicker deal timeline.
Yeah, we're trying to complete that part, aren't we, Ms. Rehman-Schneider? Councilmember Rogers?
Now, if I read this right, and these are very complicated to read, I keep going back, they have till the, we're hoping the completion by '26, is that correct?
I believe that is correct. I don't have the phase timeframes on my notes here and I apologize about that. I believe that is the correct date, yes.
Okay, I was just happy to see that. I mean, it sounds like it's a long ways away, but it's not, so we don't have it 20 years later and they're still not done. So I was kind of happy to see it. I mean, they have some time, but not so long that everybody forgets what you're supposed to be doing.
Yes, I do believe they're going to try to start the first two phases actually kind of simultaneously. They'll be two separate buildings, 5,000 square feet each, so they're going to start those pretty quickly in line with each other.
They've got some employees that live locally and I think they're going to have self-motivation to try to get the.
They're very excited.
I was just going to congratulate you for making the short time period of finishing up.
Yes, ma'am.
Great point, Councilmember Rogers. Thank you for bringing that up. Mayor Protem Nelson, was that your head? She got it. All right. Council, any further questions from Ms. Rehman-Schneider?
Good job, Jane.
Thank you.
Happy to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Thank you very much, Ms. Rehman-Schneider. Good job. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously and welcome Mocha Ventures to the city of Bastrop. We're happy to have those kind of jobs and see some great activity in our business park. All right, council, we're moving on to item 12B. We have three very similar items. The first one is 12B, consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-80 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the financial management policy, which is as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. And as the mayor just said, the three items are related. They all relate to the management of our financial operations and I'm substituting for CFO Waldron this evening, who is on a well-earned vacation. Colin, if you don't mind. So the first of these is the financial management policy and our practice is for council to review and act upon these policies once a year, and we try to do that around this time of year. There are just a few amendments to the financial management policy that we're recommending tonight, and the first detail you can find on packet page 103. And there's language there that speaks to how the budget planning process works here in Bastrop, and we're suggesting some amended language there that, as the slide indicates, clarifies when the proposed budget is submitted. It needs to be our practice that we give that to the city council annually to you with you, so you have enough time to adopt it in a reasonable amount of time before the fiscal year starts. And so the suggested language is that happens, that the city manager submits a proposed budget by the end of July, which has been our practice here, and then that the budget workshops follow after that. So I think that's fairly straightforward and simple language there. Colin, go ahead. And the next amendment, you can find on packet page 106, still talking about the financial management policy. And we talked about this a bit as I presented the proposed budget to council, and this is actually something I spoke about with the former finance committee that Councilmember Rogers sat on. We're suggesting a policy statement here to be included that limits the transfer from the electric fund to the general fund to 11% of total revenue. It is our understanding that best practice is to limit that transfer from 10 to 12%. So we're splitting the difference. From time to time, the state legislature pays attention to that transfer amount and attempts to limit it. We do see that transfer as a return on investment, or another way of looking at it is a payment in lieu of taxes. This transfer does not include direct costs or even indirect costs like the cost of administrative services to the electric utility. This is, this has traditionally been the funding source for community support programs. But it's, the way we're treating it, it's now general fund and the way we ought to explain that to the public, especially the BP and L rate-paying public, is that's a return on their investment. That's what they get for owning an electric utility. So that's the second point. And then the next one, Colin, is, thank you, is on page 109, and we talked about this as well during the budget process. We're suggesting that our policy language, as it regards the reserve level for the hotel motel tax fund, hotel occupancy, I should say, tax fund, cover in order the amount of debt that is owed annually for the convention center building itself, the annual allocation of community asset funding, and then 50% of the annual allocation to visit Bastrop. Taken all together, that comes just shy of about a million and a half and that, and we have budgeted sufficiently for that going into fiscal '22. And according to our very conservative fiscal forecast, we cover that threshold for all five years of the forecast. So council, that's, those are the recommended amendments to the financial management policy. Oh, no, I've got one more. Thank you, Colin, for jumping out there. We are also suggesting, maybe the most significant one, packet page 111, we're suggesting a new policy that speaks to how the city of Bastrop receives donations. And in simple here, what we're recommending is that the city manager can accept donations for less than $25,000. So for a recent example, the donation of the disc golf equipment at Bob Bryant Park would have been something that the city manager would have been able to accept and we could have sped that process up a little bit. The policy speaks to the criteria that the city manager should go through in making those decisions and considers, you know, what makes that acceptance of that donation a good idea, considers things like the maintenance required of that donation. And it also provides that council's informed of that in the quarterly report, and it would also be my practice to report on that sort of thing in the weekly memo. And then donations that would be valued more than $25,000 would need to come to council. And there's also language in the policy that speaks to discussing donations with the appropriate advisory board as applicable, and an example there would be the Parks Advisory Board. Now, I think that's all the financial management policy changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Council, any questions for city manager? Councilmember Rogers?
So on, you said on 109, are we taking out the wording of vacancy? Is that correct?
On page?
109, sorry, the little open thing. I think it's 109. It's right above the hotel. It just shows you deleted the vacancy savings, made it a contingency account.
I'm not seeing that. I'm sorry.
It's on page 107.
107, is that right? The little open thing is right where the page number is. I was just reading your little red lines.
Under contingency account.
It says deleted vacancy saving, savings.
Oh, well, that's, oh, thank you. I did not notice that in my quick review, but that's a carryover from last year's amendment to the policy where we're now limiting the contingency amount to $35,000. And so it's just a simple statement that.
I was just making sure that's kind of what was already done. And this is really bad if I found typo, because I can't spell worth anything. But under your donations.
Is there a typo?
I think in number five, value, you're supposed to have an A if that's correct. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. V L. You're missing an A.
Because I'm the worst speller in the world.
Okay. Thank you. We'll correct that.
But I do like the improvements. Thank you.
Any other questions for city manager? Mr. Hoffman, on the community asset funding, I understand the annual convention center debt payment, and we know that that's going down year over year, and then there is a day coming when that would be paid off, so that would be removed from that. On the community asset funding, will it be what was the previous year? Is that how you'll set the amount?
I believe at the time, we put the budget together, it can be, it can be based on the requested amount.
The proposed year?
Sure. I think, to be conservative, I think we could, we could take that approach at the, right. So yeah, at the time, we're doing all of the math, we will have an idea of what the requested amount would be. I think that would work.
Okay. I appreciate what we're trying to do, but I think, you know, we're used to seeing like it's 50%, it's 20%, and it seems like this is a little bit of a moving target, and I know there's a lot of moving gears in all of this.
And I think that's the idea to.
To be able to adjust.
To make sure there's a logic to what that reserve amount is and it's not just a percentage.
And I would, for the, basing the reserve on their proposed request, but I wouldn't want to reserve what they're requesting. If we don't fund all of their requests, then we should take the reserve down as well, right? The final document, that ought to match. Or we would be over-reserved, and I don't want them to not get their funding because we can't meet the reserves on their projected, on their requested amount.
So it's a, it's a minimum reserve amount.
Okay.
So I think, I think we have some room to work there.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Rogers, did you have a different question?
The other question I had in that same contest, whatever, the, yeah, that word. We used to give, what, 70,000 over to visit Bastrop to give out to different organizations? Is that?
The 75,000, it's written in their contract as the 50% of the blah, 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 plus the 75,000 that they do for hot funds that come requests during the year.
Right, so that's still within this wording?
Yes, ma'am. This way I would look at it, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was in there. Thank you.
Really nice job on helping us be able to find what you changed. That made it a lot easier to go through, so appreciate. And I don't know if you did that, I'm betting Ms. Waldron and her staff did that.
That would be correct.
So thank you, Ms. Waldron and her staff. Council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Council, we have a motion to approve resolution number 2021-80. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to item 12C, consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-81 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving and adopting the investment policy and investment strategies attached as Exhibit A, approving the list of qualified brokers attached as Exhibit B, making various provisions related to the subject and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Funds Investment Act requires an annual review by the city council of your investment policies. Some legislative sessions, they mandate amendments to the policy. That didn't happen this year. The bulk of that policy statement is directed by state law. We're not making any substantive recommendations for amendments this evening. There was one sentence in there that had some awkward wording, actually an incomplete sentence we needed to clean up, and that's the extent of the changes we're recommending to the investment policies.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any questions? Mr. Crouch?
No.
Got your mics on. All right, council, happy to entertain a motion?
A move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Jackson. Madam Secretary, we have a motion for R 2021-81, if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving to our final item for individual consideration, item 12D, consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-82 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the city of Bastrop purchasing policy. approving the City of Bastrop purchasing policy, which is attached as Exhibit A, providing for the repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, mayor. The third and last of those annually financial-related policies that council is asked to review is the purchasing policy. Again, no substantive changes being suggested here, other than we're suggesting that the city's procedures as it regards internal control relative to the credit cards we issue to city employees for purchasing city supplies and equipment as part of their daily task, that we add those provisions, excuse me, to the purchasing policy. Those provisions speak to how those cards are distributed and how those payments are approved and made. Again, it's about internal control. That policy approach has been working really well. I think we've got good tight controls over our use of credit cards, and of course, how all that works is a subject of the annual audit as well. So we recommend approval of those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Councilmember Jackson, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve, but...
Councilmember Rogers, do you have a question?
I just wanted to commend him for putting these changes in. I know that when we sat with the finance committee that you, that the mayor and council created, that credit card, the credit card policy was one of our concerns. So I think this really sums it up and gets it really fine, so we don't have any, you know, worries like we used to have. So I wanted to commend him for a great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, over the past four years, we've asked for review of the financial management policies and its associated documents, such as the purchasing policy, for more clarity and openness. And, Mr. City Manager, I really appreciate y'all's due diligence in doing just that.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Councilmember Jackson?
I'd like to move that for approval of Resolution Number R 2021-82.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. R 2021-82 is approved. Councilmember Peterson, we are on item 13.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. It is 7:41, and we are adjourned. Everyone, have a safe evening. Thank you.
[laughing]